...are present, um, any public comments on the floor?
Yeah, just a short summary, Terry Levin on Ranville Road. Just a great comment on new business, members strict on the two amendments, the personal policy. The employment one on performance evaluation, that's great, I'm glad to see you're doing that. The one on residents, I'm glad to see you're striking the those individuals after reside in the town of Ashland. I mean, the housing stock's not here, everybody knows that. I'm a little concerned about replacing what is highly encouraged following positions to reside in the town of Ashland. My experience is your hiring's going to do the job. If they can do the job, it doesn't matter if it was in Ashland, the Saris, Mapleton. Uh, as long as they can get here and do the job like they're supposed to. Uh, concern I have is you have that language in there that, you know, someone might say, "Well, I wasn't hired because of this," and they're highly qualified. So I think the town, we've been off if they just draw. The, I would just strike out, as a manager, I could recommend his article, uh, uh, "Living in Town." I wouldn't have that in there at all, uh, because of where Ashland is in the community. And, uh, but other than that, I think it's a step in the right direction.
Anybody else?
Well, as a concerned citizen and a chief's kid. I worked for a lot of that stuff down in the town garage, and I can't see how it all went to be junk in two months. I just don't understand that. You know, you're gonna give this equipment away for nothing. You know what I mean? And supposedly you want to get rid of that little excavator I worked so hard for and replace it with a backhoe. That is not possible. You can't replace an excavator with a backhoe. That machine this year did eight culverts, tore down the vault, made a turnaround up here, ditched. I have no idea how many miles it rode. With a backhoe, you move every ten feet, and you cannot replace an excavator with a backhoe. I have no idea why you would want to get rid of some of this stuff, but you'll never replace it. Stuff costs so much now. I could see doing a bucket loader, but a backhoe is useless in the town.
What do you hear, Jim?
Well, you'll never replace it, son. A new machine, a new, uh, 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 bucket loader's over two hundred thousand dollars, you know? Seems though you can put a few repairs and stuff for two hundred thousand dollars.
You got a fluid can, yeah?
You know, you've got a river down there, I don't know what you guys found wrong with it, but, uh... When we haul our winter sand, it hauls double what the other truck does. When we go give, uh, coal patch in Holton, it hauls double what the other truck does. When we haul big rocks, you can put it in there, 'cause the other truck's got the sander chains in there. You gotta be so careful you don't bust them all up. You know, you bust your bodies out. Whereas that old girl, she, hey, goes good. I, I don't know what you found wrong with it, but it's too bad to give it away with a sweeper and a wing on it.
Um, there, I would look at it, and from what it's like, from a federal compliance standpoint, it really didn't look that safe to be hauling heavy load. There's the, the frames were, the double frames are on it, and...
They all rusted and beat. Sorry for interrupting, but... Then he came down one time, and we beat one side all the way to death, and welded anything that was broke and fixed one side, and now I see the other side has a crack. I mean, it's a double frame on it, it's... And if you look at any plow truck, young Mark Rapper, he just did the same thing he is, beat all of... They just get so rusty, it gets in between them and swells them, and they're all like that. All them old plow trucks.
I get it, just it didn't seem for, for the, talking with the new director and the work that it would need to get it roadworthy, how do we better get rid of it?
I don't know what you can find for decent money, you know what I mean?
Well, he's, he's looking at this for, for different things that are for sale or used, used equipment, so...
I'm just saying, if you start buying new equipment, and all these roads in town are shit, you're gonna really hear some flack. For us two hundred thousand dollars, you can do a mile of road.
Well, we weren't really looking at any new equipment, burn new equipment. We all know that we can't afford new equipment, so...
Can't afford old equipment.
Anybody have anything else?
There's not one thing.
Sure.
Um, I work the bowl. Just trying to say, um, we had a lot of support from the town, it was great. I appreciate the police department being there. We didn't have any issues, we usually don't, but it's still good to have the presence around, and I just appreciate that. Hey, I thought it was midnight.
Does anybody else have anything to say, or any comments? Any more comments on the items? Two minutes from October eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from October eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Any discussion on the minutes? Discussion all in favor? Next thing, approve the twenty twenty-four original warrants, forty B through forty four P.
I make a motion that we approve the treasure warrant, forty D through forty fourteen.
One second, ma'am. Any discussion?
These are the September bills, right, not the October ones? Not how that works, they're a month behind?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess you're right. Summer's a panther. No, just...
All in favor?
How much did he run this one? Well, he was a great tireer.
I haven't been here for a minute.
Doesn't take much to replace one.
I don't look that.
Okay, any comments? New business, approve what claim deeds?
Yep, we have proof for, uh, I think it's all the same person, their data for...
So I need a motion for, uh, for one of us?
Uh, probably, 'cause I don't think there's all the same cases, parcels.
I make a motion that we approve the quitclaim deed for the land shown on the assessors' tax maps for the town of Ashland as map forty-four lot one thirty-six B.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion that we approve the quitclaim deed for the land as shown on the assessors' tax maps of the town of Ashland as map forty-four lot one thirty-eight.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion that we approve the quitclaim deed for the land as shown on the assessors' tax maps of the town of Ashland as map forty-four lot one thirty-seven.
Second half. Any discussion? All in favor? Next item, review, motion, discussion, call for both on C O N regarding tempo of sale. Motion, second bid, amount to the highway reserve card.
If you would indulge, uh, your packets have the minutes of the opening that we did on the sixteenth of October, and we're essentially with the last, with the attachment spreadsheet, which is probably the easiest way to talk through. We have the people who did a bid, um, and those that are high rated and agreed, the high bids, the that paid the items. And the only, uh, tie that we had was on the middle blade that was broken. We had two, uh, folks, uh, Mr. McFlan and Mr. Wurby, who both, uh, did a hundred, so we had a tie there. So my recommendation would be is, uh, if you, um, do a motion to accept the high bid, um, that we do maybe additional, um, permission to the interim town manager to reach back and let everybody re-bid the one item that was a tie on. And whatever highest bid comes in, uh, for that one item, that we would go ahead and, um, allow that item to be sold at that, at the highest bid for that item. Hopefully we will get, and then we would, I would instruct them, they've got to get something higher than their original bid that they're bidding on. Okay, that way we can tell to get something higher than...
Yeah.
As opposed to the front, uh, numbers that we...
A minimum hi- you know, a minimum bid is what... Yeah, item.
Exactly, yeah. So how would you, would you like to proceed with, uh, reading the highest bidder for each item? Or how would you like to proceed on the numbers?
Um, once we can discuss the numbers and if we want to prove the seller.
Right. So, the, uh, the first item is your cat deed for those?
It doesn't seem like a lot of money for what it is for a, a piece of equipment. What, what do we use that equipment for? Do, do we use it, first question? Okay, and so if we use it, and we had to hire somebody to do what that does, would it cost...
That's one day.
That's one day. To me, that seems like it's something we should reject. Do you want to take them one at a time and go that way? All right, so I'm gonna make this motion, and you can, uh, they need to be positive motions, don't they?
Yes.
So if I make a positive motion and we put it down...
Correct.
Okay. Is that way, did I say that wrong?
This is the peanut gallery.
But with more knowledge than us, that's why we...
Is it a working piece of equipment?
To my knowledge, it's not perfect, but it works. So there's, there is an issue with a, a track, and I can actually, we talked to Jim about that one, but the, the track tensioner on one side, I heard.
So what type of tensioner is it?
Problem?
There's almost everything in the closet down there, we rebuilt...
Hat, I think, probably got thrown away.
Probably got thrown away with everything else doing.
So who, who? Authorizes it to be thrown away? No, I'm serious. It's, it's, again, that would be interesting, Tom, because like at school, if we have stuff, it usually goes to like a, a sale, if we don't just get to, not, not big things. Let's get him throw a piece of paper, but I don't know if the town how that works.
A lot of stuff got thrown away.
But if they're usable parts that, that could be fixed, that, that could go on it to be fixed, who authorizes you to go and have it just thrown away? I don't think, I don't think that's how they mature.
No, I would think they would, uh, see if they want to sell them by higher, I don't know.
I would say the highway, highway forum at his department, he has to determine what is salvageable and what is not. And if he wants to get rid of something, he should be ready to...
If he's there, if he ain't there, some of his stuff slides through the junk pile.
There's been a lot of stuff disappear.
You'll be getting, you'll be getting a bill on the cut edges there, eleven hundred dollars.
Shouldn't somebody be accountable for that?
I would think so. I've never thrown anything away in my life.
I don't mind that. You know, you know where it was, like for Jim, it's putting a spoiler in there.
Too many to throw away.
But I don't throw it away.
I would think if that's the highway director, chief manager, to just decide what is okay and what isn't okay, and that, that's part of his job, right?
But we know we don't have the money to buy a new bulldozer. And if this bulldozer does a job for, even if it's once a year...
If you're gonna clear the top of that pit, it's twenty-five hundred dollars.
You've got to look at it, I think you've got to look at it as... You can't, we can't afford to replace... Can, can we afford to replace it, I mean...
I mean, if we had one, and we had an extra one, and we were looking to get rid of it, maybe something like that, but...
We've already done that. We got rid of the D seven.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion, I'm telling you right up front, I'm voting against my motion, okay?
Can you agree?
Well, I don't have an make, I'm making a motion that we reject the bid for the cat bozer, dozer. That's my motion, I, I'll vote for that, there we go. Reject the bid.
I second that. Any discussion on rejecting the bid for the cat bulldozer? All in favor?
I mean, I could see if you had a piece of highway equipment that goes on the road daily, that's a safety issue or whatever, you know, doing something to this, but if it's something that, I mean, you're not gonna run that down the road, you're gonna do, like you said, you use it four in a year, and how much money if you save that, even if you only use it four or five times, you know, at least it's...
Save five thousand dollars, at least.
Does it use last year?
No, we didn't use it last year, but we're gonna have to use it this year, because they got to clear the top of the pit. Well, they didn't do any sand this year, so next time they do sand, they got to clear the top of that pit.
And reclaim what you're doing.
Reclaim, right.
There's a bunch of wooden stuff down there, it's gonna be done something.
We use it side the road, you use it side the road for landscaping, and Don Bully wanted a something out back here, you're gonna use it out back of here. It ain't perfect, but it works and it runs, it starts right up just like...
All, well, I will add is, if the parts are not down there to fix it, which it sounds like they may have been, where, where more than you can handle it to fix it so it works properly? You saw the man who's...
But maybe a whole lot more than that to replace it, though, wouldn't it?
It would, but if it's used once a year, is it worth keeping it to have to maintain it? Or if it's not even used every other year? I mean, you didn't need to use it last year, right?
But when we do our sand, we push sand, they do sand. Right now, it could go down to the...
If you use it once every two years, I don't feel having it, I mean, if you got it, but it's that much, something more that's gonna rot or need more maintenance from sitting, I mean, something sitting is worse than having it.
So are we looking to not replace that at all?
No, no. That was, is my understanding. They want to move on to Michael? Nineteen seventy international dump truck?
What, is this the, which one's the double one?
That's the wheeler.
That's the...
That's that one?
Yeah.
The mother turret jumped.
All right.
They used to haul the snow from like sidewalks and stuff.
They won't haul traction for sure.
Sure, they're, they're...
They're junk.
Take what you can, take what you can get.
Okay.
I mean, they both run fine, but the bodies are gone, they're just junk.
All right, so I can make a motion to, I make a motion that we approve the bid for the nineteen seventy international dump truck and the nineteen eighty-four international dump truck.
The highest bid.
The highest bid, thank you.
I second that.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Okay, moving on to the ninety-five Ford dump truck.
It just, does it, uh, no, does it run, is it used?
Does run, but it's all I work to be safe to run on the road.
And how much would it cost for us to replace it?
Like, replace it used or replace it brand new?
Used. Used?
Thirty, I, yeah, forty, maybe.
You're going to replace it for forty? Excuse me for speaking on a turn. Look at them Garfield plow trucks. Them were pretty brand new, you paid thirty, thirty for better, and then we're single axle.
So from what the, what I was told is, they don't have any intention of using that truck by the issue.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be replaced?
If they did replace it, they would want to go with a single axle instead of a wheeler.
Here's my thought.
But it needs, like, the frame is rotted.
Yeah, he's...
I know it's a double frame, but it's, it's rotted, it's not safe. It wouldn't pass a D O T inspection the way it is right now. Or, I mean, it could take a lot to be, you could, you'd have to change a whole frame. It's not, it's not worth the money to fix it.
I don't know if that's a good bid for it or not, I don't go on that one. You know, sometimes when we rush, we make mistakes. And where it's our new, our new person's first year as the guy, as the head guy, gives his first year as the head guy through the winter, right? So if we just went slow and didn't accept this bid today, we could keep it through the winter, and if, if our new people found out that they needed it, they would have it. And if they still don't need it next year at this time, we could revisit it, and it wouldn't be that much worse off than it is now, correct? And that would give the new people a chance to see, once they're in, making those decisions, do they need it or do they not? I don't know, it's just so expensive to replace something once you get rid of it.
I, I know I'm out of term, but if Tyler said it's not a road safe, and what if that's a D O T inspection, do you want to put a town employee in that vehicle, in a non-safe vehicle?
Only if it can be fixed. Yeah, 'cause they were not saying it's gonna be used, right? Only if they decide to fix it and use it.
It would take a while.
I know this gentleman put that bid in because he, that's what he valued, the engine and drive rate. He was wanting to use that for another truck.
Pull it out. What's your thought, Chris? I don't know, Gerald, I'd be smarter.
I guess I don't really know. One of my thoughts are...
Uh, what do you think, just put a bid on that?
I don't think the truck's worth putting any money into.
But what do you think about the bid?
I, it's low.
I have looked, so I couldn't, I, I have to go by...
See, that's like...
I, I have conflicting input, and I have not looked at it.
I'm not an expert on this.
I do see Jim's point, not necessarily this truck, but because of the, the other dump trucks all have Sanders built into them, in order to haul something like rocks for a project or something, you could damage the Sanders, because you can't take those out. I also see that they, when you do coal patch, there'd be multiple trips with a small truck. But I understand it, it's not safe for the road, it's not safe for the road, too. So if it's, you know, I mean, ten thousand dollars to fix it, it'd be better than thirty thousand per truck or forty thousand per truck. But we don't know that number. We don't know if that would make it safe, so it's hard without all the information.
Did you ever think of the cutoff frame?
You could, but the front end has issues. And it's pretty hard, you have, you have to find a used front end for L nine thousand.
What's so wrong with the front end?
There is issues with the pit in mine, Kingpins.
There's one Kingpin's got a little bit of plate, the other one's brand new on the other side.
I'm, I'm sorry, I know you have some reserve to go with, but...
I'm just saying, with the town... If that D O T guy just kind of, just rough it over, look at it, and, and give the, get dirt in it anymore.
I, I actually think that's a good idea.
I do, too.
Now, would there be something you would, like, look over? You'd be able to...
I'm gonna make a motion that we table the bid for the nineteen ninety-five Ford dump truck.
I'll second that.
Cover?
Yeah, all in favor? This is the nineteen seventy-nine lawnmower.
I quote that really, seventy-nine lawnmower, or more than?
No, it's old.
I don't know that one.
I make the motion that we accept the bid for the nineteen seventy-nine lawnmower to the highest bid.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion that we accept the bid for the metal blade that works to the highest bidder. I skipped the one with the tie, I mean, it's easy. Where the, yeah, but I skipped...
Oh, no, we're sorry.
The metal blade that works to the highest bidder.
I second that.
All in favor?
I make a motion that we accept the bid for the one-half inch drill press to the highest bidder.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion that we approve the bid for the sheet metal ben- benzer to the highest bidder.
Second half.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Do we have a bucket loader?
Yes.
Do we use chains on a bucket loader?
Not since I've been there.
Does that make more sense?
I got brand new tires.
I make a motion that we accept the highest bid for the bucket loader with tire, bucket loader tire chains.
I second that.
All in favor?
I make a motion that we send the metal lathe broken bid back to the two bidders that tied with a minimum bid of what they did this time. And the town manager can accept the bid.
I'll second that.
There's only one metal lathe, isn't there?
No, there's a broken one and a working one.
No, there's only one metal lathe, the other one's a milling machine.
Oh.
Well, that's, I don't know, it was...
There's only one metal lathe.
Alright, so we need a motion to put the, the monies that we got from the sale they put, and we need a motion to put that through there.
I make the motion that we take the money from the sales and put it in the reserve account for the highway department.
All in favor?
Okay.
You can set, to the two, the two that tied, don't bother with the one that was way below. Send it back to the two that tied, and they have to bid at least what they bid, and whoever wins, you can sell it to them. Because we know what our minimum price is.
See, there's only one metal lathe, and the thing that's broken is just the feed, the automatic feed. But there's only one of them, the other one's a milling machine.
Well, I imagine I'd be surprised if you took that to a milling machine.
I'm gonna find out.
I think some of those tools came from the school, didn't they?
Oh, is it?
That's what I figured, yeah. We'll sit down, not down, but switch.
This is a motion to discuss, call for vote on fluoridation referendum question here. Included in the town of Ashland, March seventeen twenty twenty-five general election.
So in your package, I gave you a copy that we took, the superintendent and the board trustees from the water district sent us, gave us at the last meeting, along with the, uh, procedure, recommended procedures that I think specifically came from the state. So, based on my reading of all of that, um, basically, bottom line is if you are to, uh, make a motion on it today, and pass a motion to bring this to the entire town for vote, it would be on, on the March general election of twenty twenty-five. Would be a referendum question, just as a, is listed here, shall fluoride be added to public watch supply for the intended purposes of due sufficiency? Yes means yes, and no. Um, in order for us to get it into the referendum, we must have minimum of three votes here from the council tonight. If it passes, then we would work towards getting that ballot printed up. Uh, so we would go through the normal motions of sometime in, after the first of the year, between January first and March seventeenth, we would need to have a public hearing, and let the public have enough to, to...
Get informed.
Get informed and weigh in. Uh, the water district has offered that if we provide a resource letter, which is something I recommend in here, that they would, um, printed out for us and included in their January billing, so everybody would get a resource document that they would have before we would set up a meeting. Uh, Josh told me that their minimum billing for January is about the February week of January. So if we were looking at a twenty twenty-five calendar, I would say either last week of January, first week of February, probably would be about the right time for the public hearing, and we would just gotten their bill and seen it, and that would probably work out, and that gives you ample time. If you need a second hearing before the March seventeenth date, you could still do that in eight to ten day window without any problems. So, um, I would suggest that that would be public ability goal. Um, there's pros and cons, as you saw from the paperwork that I provided to you. Um, but I'm inclined, as the town manager, to, to, uh, support what the board trustees have given us, uh, they've done some preliminary work on it, and they've offered up a gentleman, Kennebuck, uh, a guy by the name of, what was his name?
Norman Lavy.
Norman Lavy, not the Norman Lynam, actually. Uh, who was the former superintendent of the water district in Kennebuck, which was a multiple municipal water district, four or five towns were all in the same district. They did take fluoride out, uh, last, uh, last year, even before the February weekend came off of California about danger problems with, uh, children. So, my recommendation is that you, uh, consider passing it and getting it in front of the, the town for a vote at the general election tomorrow. So, just questions, our expert Josh is here, he's also had a question.
Do you want the motion?
Sure.
I make the motion that we approve the fluoridation referendum question for the March seventeen twenty twenty-five general election.
I second that.
Anybody have any discussion on it? All in favor?
Any, do you have a motion to discuss, call for vote, to approve your tax assessor contract for twenty twenty-five?
Uh, we've got a notice from our current successor that they were pulling out of Arusha County and no longer available for the twenty twenty-five, uh, calendar year. So I went to the main municipal, uh, main revenue site to find out all the local assessors that are here in the state. There were four that I sent, uh, solicitations for, and I only got back, uh, two replies, and if you would, you can take one, pass it on. This is the first reply from, uh, RCS, and...
Same ones in our package, huh?
Yeah, and then the second one, this one came in after the package we received, and this is from, uh, Louis Cousins out of Press Kyle, who has a team that does assessing here in the county. And, uh, they're not exactly apples to apples, but I'll explain that. Uh, RCS, uh, this gentleman, Josh Berry, is originally from Hudson, he knows the county fairly well. Uh, he was interested, and he did give us, he did give us a, a fairly substantial, um, uh, proposal. And that, as far as I'm concerned, it meets all the criteria, and we use an assessor at this period of time, at about eight hours a month, they come, and usually they're here for about a day, okay? Um, and his quote was, uh, ten thousand dollars for the year. Our last year's, uh, uh, assessment cost was ninety-seven hundred fifty dollars, so it's in line with even with inflation, that the number is correct. But I also did, as you can see the little numbers on the lower right there, I did a comparison to Louis Cousins', uh, proposal. He only proposed to come for four hours a month, and he proposed a fee of fifty-six hundred dollars, an additional forty-five hundred for, um, doing what he called the, um, uh, personal property work that he felt that we needed to have, um, additional work looked at. And when you look at the, uh, original fifty-six hundred dollar quote for the, you know, real estate and personal property work together, at fifty-six hundred, his hourly rate works out to a hundred and sixteen dollars an hour, whereas Josh, uh, Josh Berry's group, uh, coming for eight hours, even though it's a more expensive, um, quote, it's at a hundred and four dollars an hour. So what I'm basically saying is if we took Cousins at his currently hourly rate, we would be paying a hundred and sixteen versus a hundred and four if we asked him to do additional hours. Um, so my opinion, based on, um, what I've seen on the numbers, and then we did get a recommendation, or at least a referral, from, uh, the main revenue folks who have worked with Josh Berry, and his work is well received by the state, so he's well known, and he's very reputable. He lives there, they're out of Harmony, so that actually pulls it, and helps it, that was coming up in the future. So, um, that doesn't say that, um, Louis is not closer, they're distant, Press Kyle, I'm not sure where his assessor's actually come from, but looking at what we know for the bulk of work that we need done, if we're gonna stay with eight hours, which is about what it takes for our town, um, my recommendation is would that you would consider allowing us to give our contract out to RCS assessment, Josh Berry and the president. So that's my recommendation, once you have questions on any one of these.
So would you want the guys to, to go RCS?
That's if there is the right number of hours for what we're used to having, what Josh seems to entail.
Yeah, we average somewhere between thirty-five and forty deep, so. And now we're, I guess, we're not in a ten company, they're in the air, they give you about seven, you're here till about three, three thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion that we approve the proposal from RCS assessment services for our tax assessment.
I'm sorry, any further discussion? All in favor?
Any, do you have a motion to discuss, call for vote, to approve the fluoridation waste department?
I'll pass these out, we just were able to get these before the, just after the, the packets, so we had these to put out. Um, Chief Senior had approached, um, me about, um, the plight of our police fleet of vehicles, and we've got some issues with a couple of vehicles, and, um, he was able to, uh, get this estimate from, uh, Oklahoma, which is I think out of Augusta, as I predict, Chief. Um, they do, they do this all around the country, uh, GM has a program for leasing police vehicles. Basically, this is a Chevrolet Silverado pickup, and, uh, the way the program works is it's, uh, set up as a, it's got a police, uh, package in it for police departments, not, not the equipment that we do things, but so that it can take the extra wear and tear of that police vehicle you normally take because of the stability, building out of, you know, bad roads and what have you. Um, this, uh, is a lease purchase, which means it's a five-year lease, and the amount of the lease, as you can see in the pricing terms, is fifty-six, one fifty-three. And the lease would, uh, start as soon as we would, uh, make a commitment to it, and the interest rate is at seven point one percent, which is actually a little lower than normal rates right now, they just went down. Um, and it's a quarterly payment, so it would be three thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven, thirty-eight cents, uh, per quarter. So that roughly works out to just, uh, over thirteen thousand per year for this vehicle. At the end of the five-year lease, uh, you own the vehicle. And if you decide you wanna sell the vehicle and then go into a new lease, or use it as a trade-in towards a new lease, you can do that. Uh, it's very, very flexible. Um, the key thing is during the ownership, there's a, the normal standard three, five-year warranty, so three year on, um, mechanical, uh, I think five year on the drive terrain, which is usually pretty standard for, for, I think, Chevy and products. So, uh, but the normal wear and tear, any tires that we have to replace, oils, et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, it, we're, it's just like we're owning the vehicle, we have to maintain it. Okay? And in terms of the equipment that we would need for the police department itself to do their jobs, all their radios and, and machines and computer hookups, stuff like that, we have that from one of the vehicles, which is, is it the Yukon? Chief, we have a Yukon that's where we've already hauled, for all that stuff to be taken out of it, so we're gonna use that equipment to put into this new vehicle, so we don't have to go out. The only thing we may have to, uh, purchase, which Chief assures me is not too expensive, is it's not called a cage, but whatever the petition is that we have to put in there in case we're hauling, you know, hauling a prisoner, um, we'll have to put a little money in, buy whatever is the right, uh, saying. It's not like the old metal cages, like the Harski and Hutch days, but it starts to be, but, um, that's the only thing that for internals, probably, that we're gonna have to do, do better, being else, to make it work as far as the end of the day, police vehicles. So the game plan is, we get this purchase, uh, lease purchase in place, that'll be the primary cruiser, the secondary cruiser is the one that we see mostly around town now, the dark colored one. We will then, uh, uh, have the ability to retire both the Yukon and the old Explorer that has given us some issues, and we probably will end up not using this winner very much. And the only thing we'll have left as far as the police fleet will be the small sedan, the tall sedan, and we'll keep that as a, um, a third vehicle that, if they need it for any reason, because that one is rea-, you know, reasonable to maintain, and we don't have to make any issue with that one. So that, did I cover most everything there, Chief, on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's the game plan. Uh, our, our thinking here is, uh, since an equipment purchase for the police department, uh, or lease, we would take this out of the, uh, the reserve, uh, account, because he's got funds in the reserve account to cover this, and the fact that we only have to pay it on a quarterly basis, so it's straightforward, we know what the payment's gonna be, put it down at the end of five years, and we can budget, you know, and we can forward in the future. So, uh, we would recommend that, I would recommend that you, uh, knew that you can do the lease and, uh, get the police department ready to go.
That would also be a side of the hybrid, sure.
Hybrid, at least it's not, at least that's not the primary.
Right.
It's miserable.
I make a motion that we approve the bid for the twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado, okay?
I'll second that.
And when you talk about having the money in reverse, do we have enough to cover this year's reserves right now to twelve thousand, or?
Well, well...
And we would be pro-rating, we don't have to count three thousand of this year's reserves.
Well, we won't get billed until ninety days from when we send this in, so it'll be in twenty twenty-five.
It's gonna be in the new budget almost, okay?
When, uh, for servicing is, this can be done, press Kyle, it does not go down to the deal, is it?
No, no, yeah, each other.
Does anyone have anything else on it? Alright, all in favor of approving the lease for the twenty-five Ford ships that brought up the lease, buddy?
Next item would be to review motion, discussion, call for vote, on two amendments, amendment to the personnel lawsuit.
Uh, given the remarks earlier by, uh, Jim, um, his recommendation was, uh, of the sheet that was prepared to, uh, to take out the entire line on, uh, a resident requirement, and the, that was the second portion, which is the last amendment article, uh, one T eight residency, um, on the personnel, uh, manual. The first one, the new paragraph E, which is really the bulk of this, uh, two amendment request, is, uh, putting a little bit more teeth to the, uh, performance review process, because you all have talked about that in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, in the package I had shown you, a proposed, uh, set of performance review sheets, one for basically employees, and then one for department heads, um, and with the exception of the police department, where we might wanna consider, I talked to Chief when I was preparing these, uh, we may wanna add an additional line that's specific to police department personnel, because they have a requirement to provide external reports to the court. Uh, he and I would, would write the draft of line that says, you know, how expedient and, and professional are their ability to do their court required reporting, uh, something along that line. But other than that, what now we've had here is something that both the department heads could use on an annual basis to, to settle the employee fee and let them know, you know, how they're doing, and, uh, if there are issues that we really want to get, have that discussion. And if you're a new hire coming into town of Ashland, you would be given a copy of this, and you would be told as far as you're onboarding, that the first six months, because first officer man says clearly you're in probation, you're free for six months, but the second six months, you'd be also subject to the performance review. So it would be a six-month review in, in as far as a formal review for someone in probation, um, first year hire. But they would now, now know what they... But they would now, now know what their expectations are at the beginning of their hire, by the end of the year, your first year in, in the new position, this is what your department head is going to be looking at. And of course, we'll keep the same process in place for the town manager reviews, all of the performance reviews, but specifically now I would be able to give some authority to the department head to be, and somebody in their own department, and if there's something that, there's an issue with something that they see that's not happening that should be happening, based on what they're going to be evaluated on, they'd have enough committee to present that to the person before it gets either an and/or a problem for disciplinary action or whatever. So, this helps decentralize the way we're, we're operating and give the department head some authority and supervisory responsibility to, to look out for their people and to work with them. If there's an issue, they can bring it forward, and hopefully they don't run into, you know, personnel issues that places have, because no one knows kind of what they're supposed to be doing and/or they haven't been told that they're doing stuff that's wrong and/or.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
You know, it's just the standard process of helping people understand what their role is, and knowing that these are the kinds of things that the supervisor is looking for to ensure that you're, you're doing your job correctly. Especially in government business where it's customer service, you know, we're all about, they can give it to you. So with the proposed change that was recommended by Jim Reisner on striking that out, I, my recommendation is that you would accept the new paragraph E. Talking about the employee, and I'll read it out for everyone here. After completing the initial probationary period in paragraph D, the employees will participate in an annual performance review delivered by the department head and by the town manager. For department heads, all signed reviews will be placed in the employee's official personnel file upon completion, on reviews already done and approved by the town manager. Sample performance review form shall be provided to all new hires as part of their onboarding to a new position. And that will become new paragraph E of the personnel review.
I don't know if there's anything else, I've got a little sticky note that says town manager question. Does that mean town managers, I don't know why no one else has it, I've got my.
Yeah, that, that was probably my copy. It's okay, I have my copy.
Well theoretically, I think we would do one on the town manager.
Yeah, yeah.
That would make sense. But we wouldn't do one, the town manager would do all the others. The only thing I see that I really like seeing this is a box for the employee to respond. I like how concise this is, but if somebody was to write something down, and I had something I wanted to respond to that, before I sign it, I'd like to have a place to just respond.
Well, I have a section for employee signature, there's a lot of light here on one case, so I think we could call it a.
That would be the only thing.
Employee comment or something like that.
Exactly, just in case they have something they want to say.
So is this something you found here, or just, this is just something you made?
It's concise, and gives you a lot with different checkmarks, it's really good.
Yeah, well, my rationale was, department heads are busy, they don't have a lot, lot of time, but this gives them something that they can quickly, you know, in their own mind, take through, and then they have an opportunity to sit and go through it with the, the person. And like I said, if there's an employee comment, you give an opportunity to do that, but at least there's something in their jacket saying, hey, you're doing a good job, and we're happy with you. And that's, I think that's, you know.
Well, the thing is, I've been in situations where I'll do something, and my boss does it, but I do what I'm in trouble, and then they don't get in trouble, it's like, well, why is it all right for you, but not for me?
It all depends on his and my, as you said, right?
I like this, thank you for doing that.
Are you ready for motion? I make a motion that we approve the new article E on the employment of those review policy, that we approve the review policy, and, I'm going to do it both, and that we strike the residency policy, or residency requirement altogether. I do like your paragraph that says, this is not part of the motion, I like your paragraph that says with an aging workforce, it's becoming more difficult to find certified and credentialed personnel to fill our positions that require them. Having strict residency requirements limits our ability to hire and keep certified and credentialed hires. In today's workforce, workforce pool, having to hire from other communities is prevalent across the country.
You're trying to say worlds.
Yeah.
We are.
That paragraph's not part of the motion, but I do, I like that.
I'll second what she intended to move. Go to my table.
Isn't there any discussion on the personnel part? All in favor?
Good, thank you.
And we are full business, you mean channeling and starting to play with the board ideas up to the updates?
As instructed by your units from community staff, we did return the check received by the town miss artis for library services, and there's a copy of a letter that I sent to Betty Rapper, Betty Haley, so, Betty Haley, town manager, for the fact that we are expecting town miss artis to reply back and hopefully pay their full subsidy requirement for library, subsidy which was ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-two and fifty-nine cents. And I have not heard anything back from the town miss artist at this stage, but we basically said, had the original letter that went out for the subsidies, that it was all or nothing, there was not going to be any negotiation on the amount. And so, we're, at this point, we need to hear back from town miss artists, and what they want, what their budget is, and what they want to do. And so, I have an update on that aspect.
Okay. Thanks for following us on that.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move the executives from meeting to the actors of hiring.
So, I'm still on the hook here. Okay, all right, you have a copy of what I'm speaking from, so if you'd like to follow along, there's a few bits in the line that came in since I sent it out, but as you had requested a few months back, I did include in the packets the Princeton Parala reports, so you have both the June and September reports. The September report showed a deficit of three thousand, four hundred and five dollars and two cents. And my understanding is, still we cut, get some wood cut, sometimes we end up small amounts of deficit, so we start seeing some funds come back in, so I don't have anything else to add on to that. Number two, we received the Ashland area on aging twenty-five, twenty-five request for eight hundred dollars, and we have been funding that from just past, so we'll be including that in the twenty twenty-five budget. Number three, the tax anticipated note that we have with the town trust, we did pay that off on October seventeenth, which was fifty thousand plus the sixty-one hundred redoubled twenty-five cents in interest, so that's paid. We have paid our county taxes, two hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and forty-five, also on September. On the, number five, there was a question on videos.
No.
Sorry, trivial situation, we have all the videos uploaded, so up until tonight's meeting, they're all online now, so you can add them in. Number six, the ARPA grant that we were discussing, which is the Station Street Subdivision Phase One review. That grant is in the process of being posted by our grant administrator, Karen Petrie. The planning board did meet on the twenty-sixth of October. They have some questions that have been posed for the engineering firm, Haley Ward, who is in the process of providing some answers, and there was, I think, maybe a question or two from the planning board that I am having to reach out to the town legal team and be missing Prescott on regarding the D. But at this stage of the game, the phase one, which was the funding that came from ARPA funds, that will be closed out, and then we'll be waiting for the planning board to determine what next steps they want to make in order to cancel, if any. So that is still a project that will be a while in the making, because we would probably want to look for grant funds for phase two, if we were going to do anything. So at this stage, we'll wait and see how the closeout goes, and whether or not the planning board is satisfied with the answers they get that they posed to the engineering firm, and then we'll go over there. So I would say I probably will have maybe, if the planning board does meet, we'll, we'll be talking about it a little bit later here, that might be another item, is whether or not they want to recommend moving on to a phase two of this project. So we'll be waiting for their response on that. Number seven, the twenty twenty-five municipal notice that you are probably all familiar with, we're at the end of the year, coming up next month, so we'll be getting those all ready for signature at probably next month's meeting, and that'll be taking the administration off the disbursement warrant list and adding, I think, yeah, are you going to do this stuff that came right ahead, so we'll be adding gear for that. And the assessors notice and the order of municipal officers, that all, these all go into the town report for twenty twenty-five, so hopefully it could be done next month at the next month's meeting. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention now, because my number eight here is, I had talked this over a little bit with Tyler, and he seemed to be agreeable to it, and if you are in agreement, anyone can sign down, but we thought we would designate Cherry, since you're already recorded secretary and you're on the banking.
Trust, yeah.
The town trust signature card now, we would use you as a backup, so that if Tyler's out of town on the road and can't come in to sign warrants, that we could have you come and do that, if you're still able. The only thing I'm concerned is, I don't want somebody like from the main room, or somebody showing up unexpected, because they do, they'll come in unexpectedly, and they'll say, show us your warrant this week, and it's like, eh, I don't have them signed, because he's out of town. But we want to be able to say, look, we have a backup, and, you know. If you hadn't funded that day that they came, we could say, we'll have someone here to fund it, and so. So, any council member can make that motion? No, sorry, Tyler cannot, but Chris Tom or Gayle can make that motion.
No. I'm hoping that we, that Cherry, a signing.
Designated.
Designated signer for warrants, in the event that Tyler is incapacitated.
With Gayle.
Not with Gayle, not with Gayle. I'll second that.
All, any discussion? All of these?
I'll stay.
Agreed.
I'm not against it, I'm just abstaining.
Number nine, we received the renewal for the Central Rustic Community Society, because I think November must be the month that everybody wants their money for next year. That bill is twenty-five hundred, twenty-four dollars and twenty cents, and that's something that we've been budgeting, and that's a mandate that we, we don't want to run our own mix side, we have mine as the closest one, so that's the one. So, subject to, no question, we'll make sure that that gets included on the twenty twenty-five budget. Okay, number ten, this is reference to the book for twenty twenty-five, when we get ready to do our publication next March timeframe. Dedications, whether or not you want to do one and/or more dedications. We have room for three, we've done three before, I've noticed in past publications, so we could do up to three, and we had come up with a list of six folks, and they're on your list here, and what I didn't do is, I didn't give you, I have a little documentation that I can get to every one of you.
The back page?
Oh, was there a back, yeah, the back page, yeah, okay. I had a little detail on each person, only because I was able to at least glean from talking to a few folks, who these folks were, and what they, you know, did for the town, or whatever. So, we don't, I'm only bringing this, teeing it up now, so you have time to think about this, because we could do this at the December meeting, even as late as January. And if there's somebody that we may have missed, that you want to add to this list, we have time to do that, okay? Any question here, nothing?
Okay.
Next item, I had on my sheet, December eighteenth, but it's December eleventh was the projected staff Christmas party. Now, December eleventh, now, we have already mentioned, December eleventh has a potential date for a town council meeting, but that doesn't preclude having a town council meeting, because the Christmas party for the staff is done at the rec center anyway, it's not done here, so.
Is it different from what's on this paper, though?
Yeah, I had the eighteenth, but we went back to look at our records.
Oh, got it.
And it was on the, it was on the twelfth or eleventh last year, so we said, well, we might, because that's usually what happens, is we close at noon time, and have a party up at the rec center, we, we pulled the office down.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so if everybody is okay with the eleventh, that's what we will go for. And of course, the council is about to stop by and be at party, and, I don't know.
It's on Wednesday, and it's a day off.
It's a Wednesday, yeah.
You said there was a meeting as well on that day?
Well.
Because I have another meeting on Wednesday, the second Wednesday of March.
Okay, so.
So, we can meet that day, do it.
And it's the end of the year of that one, so we have to be, I'm an officer in that meeting, too.
Right, so, I mean, we're okay with the Christmas party?
Sure.
Okay, the, sort of, the last piece of kind of downings here is the main municipal employees' health plan rates for the new year have come in, and there's going to be an increase of nine percent on the health plans, and not one percent on dinner. So, we'll obviously factor that into the budget.
We'll rate the floor right out of that.
Okay, now the last item that I have that's on our list is, I've got the letter, I just got it today, from Lifelike, those are the aviation folks that do medical evac, and they're asking again for a donation, which is twenty-five per catheter rate, is how they laid it out. Last year, we had budgeted for six oh five, so we must have went down on a couple of people, because they're asking for six oh one as a donation, so we'll make sure we include that in our twenty twenty-five budget. And that is all I have for my interview.
The letter from four H that they sent you today, you're going to wait on that one?
Oh, uh, yes.
I don't wait on it, because I was here early, and you mentioned it.
Yes, so, thank you for bringing that back to my attention. I did get a email from town boards, Chairman Woodyear, the town manager, they are interested in having a discussion about potential development of contract for ambulance service, and they've invited me to attend their meeting next Wednesday night with the selectmen. So, at this stage, I will go and will listen to what they have to say, and anybody else from the joint committee that was involved who just wants to attend.
What?
But I'll, I'll go and find out what they have to say, and then I'll come back and discuss whatever they have, what they want to discuss on that. And that's all of it.
I could probably go with you. What time is it, are you?
Uh, six thirty, so.
All right, council items. Do you have the other?
Who's items are?
Well, do you have any?
I have covered it all.
You can talk about the date of our next meeting.
Yes, why don't we talk about the date of our next meeting? Well, it's supposed to be the tenth, but there are some conflicting things. The school's having a big concert. You guys, you guys.
I'm glad, you can certainly, it'd be eleven, too, I don't hear from you. Don't change it for me. And I can make the eleven work.
Does it?
Until, of course, seven twenty-five, I can meet somewhere seven thirty.
Does it tenth work?
Well, tenth is your concert.
Tenth is concert.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong month.
December ninth?
It's all in the December.
Oh, no, it's concert that night, I'll be here.
You said it was the tenth.
Okay. Monday night is Prescal Community Band, or Central Rustic Community Band concert that I play at. The tenth is the kids' concert. The band concert.
Right. So what about the seventeenth?
Seventeenth works.
Do the seventh seventeen?
Tuesday the seventeenth, Tom?
This is for what? No, sure.
Tom, did you have any items? That part?
I'll have one, you said roll an executive session after this?
Yes.
Well, I just, I noticed our last month meeting, we went executive session, and there were some notes being taken. We're not supposed to be taking notes when we're in executive session. I just wanted to say, I should have said something, anyway, I didn't do that. We're not supposed to be taking notes when we're in executive. That's all I wanted to say.
You mean to make the motion? You mean to make the motion?
No, I just said council item, I just, I just noticed that there was notes being taken and I didn't know if anyone, if everyone was aware that we're not supposed to.
I'm the note taker, it's me, Tom, I don't even know.
Well, if, this is where.
We did write the time because we needed the time for Susan. I know we did that.
She wrote the time, yes. I wrote down what I had to say in the motion. Is that what you're talking about?
No, we didn't make a motion. All I know is.
Well, we came out, made a motion, yes.
Yeah, we're not supposed to make that. But anyway, that's all I have to say for council, I've heard of council item.
So ending that, or after that, we will go to executive session.
I need a motion that we go into executive session to discuss court collaboration termine. They brought the one MRSA.
Snow went up and right, Lilian?
It was, it was.
Twenty-first.
Well, yeah.
Around.
So we can set up.
What day, what day is it?
So the party's actually going to be listed. So I prefer to, then the party.
It's for you, it's for us.
Yeah, it feels good that we're all the same age, we're the same county, yeah. War, war, that's right. Watching them go through town and waving with a smile is much better than what we have.